Why not?
So I'll second it.
Ah, okay.
True, good point. We'll do that, Julie.
All in favor. Alright, okay. Alright, um, our, our next item on the agenda is election of, uh, Chair of the Select Board. Um, and so if we don't have to, we'll do this as a, um, public, uh, election. Uh, I know we have done it in the past as a secret ballot, but hopefully we won't have to. So do I have any nominations on the?
Nominate, uh, to be the Chair of the Select Board.
Alright, um, do I have a second?
Second that.
Alright, any other nominations? Hearing none, uh, let's take a vote, all in favor of Donna being the Chair. Okay.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, we'll go to the election of the Chair of the Board of Assessors, which this year is not a paid position. Well, in the past, it's been a paid position. Um, do we have nominations for the Chair of the Board of Assessors? I'd actually like to nominate Jeff. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, any other nominations?
No.
Hearing none, uh, let's take a vote for the Chair of the Board of Assessors. All in favor for Jeff being the Chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright. We're going right through this agenda here. We'd like to vote to change the name of the Ad Hoc Road Committee to just plain Road Committee. Cause ad hoc makes it sound like it's just something that was temporary just for that moment. And, um, and we thought since, you know, with, with an active road commissioner, that it would make sense to have a road committee rather than an ad hoc road committee. So do you have any issues with that change?
No, uh, there ain't. Uh, legal differences, obligations.
Nope.
Many people.
No, but ad hoc feels like it's just, it's a temporary thing that we just needed it for. And I think it was really started way back when there were some paving issues or whatever. And so we needed to get a little committee together.
The sand shed actually, there was one, there's been several different road committees through the years and, uh.
For different reasons.
For different reasons, yeah.
Which then would be like an ad hoc, but it seems like it's now more stable organization. Alright, you had your hand up?
Do I, no, I wish, but I will add that this was proposed last year to be removed as an ad hoc because of the temporary nature of ad hoc.
Mm-hmm, great, alright, so we're gonna do it this year. So, um, so I'd like to make a motion that we change the name, um, to Road Committee. Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, speaking of changes, we'd like to change the name of the Broadband Committee, which has been in effect for a few years now. Um, their focus was really on getting Spectrum down here or getting somebody down here, um, to Technology Committee and set terms as at one year. To really define, um, the committee to be a little bit broader than what it had been. Uh, part of that came up because we were also looking at issues with signs and some other things. So we just wanted to broaden it. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we change the name from Broadband, Broadband Committee to Technology Committee and set the term at one year. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I'd like to suggest an amendment to that, um, to make it the Broadband and Technology Committee. Cause that's what the committee had, uh, agreed to last year.
Alright.
To keep the broadband because it's still the potential broadband issues. We still have a table kind of track, which we may never negotiate, uh, with Spectrum. Spectrum is one of the one, but that's, that's, we're responsibility still there and so that places.
Okay, so I'd like to change my, uh, my motion. So I make a motion that we change the name of Broadband Committee to Broadband and Technology Committee. Do I have, and, and set the terms at one year. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, not on the agenda, but, um, I'd like to make a motion, I've already lost it. Um, we have a letter of resignation that I took someplace. Here it is, um. Jerry Bodnar, who's been our, um, our plumbing inspector, licensed plumbing inspector, um, has, um, put in a letter of resignation, uh, effective June 30th. Um. Can I maybe read this all to her? Or should I? No, okay.
Well, you can, you don't have to.
Yeah, um, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept Jerry Bodnar's resignation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh, and listen, just saying, I'm, I'm enjoying that doing the seconds. We're also gonna do it in the minutes if, 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 you know.
I'm taking notes too.
Yeah, yeah.
I noticed that there was a pause every time I'm waiting for a second and, um, it didn't.
I, I, I'm so used to it, to Jeff do it, that I'm like, not stepping up, that's okay.
Okay, so that's out of the way, alright. So, um, this is the first week in July and one of the things that we have to do is, um, vote to approve appointments. And, um, rather than do each one individually, we're gonna just go through the entire 500 pages here and, um, I'll read them and then what we'll do is, is, um, if, if that's okay with everybody is we'll just do a blanket acceptance and if there's an issue, is that okay with everybody? Yeah, okay, alright, so. Uh, Position Archivist is, uh, for one year. Gay Wagner, Board of Appeals Alternate. We have two openings for that. Board of Access, uh, Assessors Chair Jeff Tarbox. Code Enforcement Officer for one year Gary Richardson. Code Enforcement Officer Deputy for one year Ron Studly. Conservation Commission, three-year term Donna Curry. Conservation Commission Associate, Associate, three-year term Tom, Thomas Porter. Constable and Animal Resource Officer for one year Amos Greenleaf. Animal Resource Officer Deputy for one year Jim Cromwell.
You guys remember?
No, I know I did.
His sole responsibility is pick up the dead deer on the side of the road. Um, we don't have a constable deputy, so if you want somebody to help you, holler. Uh, E-911 Addressing Officer for one year Evan Goodkowski. E-911 Addressing Officer Deputy for one year Jason Cates. Emergency Management Director for one year Jason Cates. Emergency Management Director Deputies, there are two of these, each for one year. Joe Dickatanen and Julie Kate Casson. Fire Chief for one year Stacy Hutchinson. Fire Chief Deputy Jason Abbott, do you know if that's correct?
You don't have to appoint that.
Okay.
But it is him, but you, that's not an appointment you have to do.
For which one, the deputy?
The deputy.
Yeah, that's why there's a question mark here. Why not this one?
Um, that's just, um, just like the captains, those are Stacy appointments throughout in the department.
Uh, so he does it within his?
Department.
Okay, okay.
That is not a town appointment.
General Assistance Administrator for one year Donna Curry. General Assistance Administrator Deputy Carol Norris. Harbor Master for one year Ted Christie. Harbor Master Deputy for one year Dan Bradford. History Committee Member for three years Jean Wilkinson Exter. History Committee Member Associate for one year Callie Connor. History Committee Member Associate for one year Connie Ostus. History Committee Member Associate, all of these are one year until I tell you differently. Um, DeeDee Greenleaf Hodgson. History Committee Member Associate George Richardson Jr. History Committee Member Associate, there're gonna be four more of these, someone quit saying that. Uh, John Henderson, Ken Swanton, Lou Anna Freud. And Mary Ellen Barnes and Ruth Lorraine Presby. Alright, Lincoln County Budget Advisory Committee Representative Jeff Tarbox. Lincoln County Regional?
Good, good fortune.
Usually the representative to Lincoln County, uh, MMA, main municipal. And although you're supposed to discuss and appoint amongst each other.
And we did talk about these.
You did?
Yeah, we had a meeting last Wednesday.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, cause usually it's talked about here.
Yep, yep, we had.
Those are actually voting, so.
Yep, yep, um. I don't know what that is, a rep in a. You can't read it either. Wait a minute, let me look at the written.
Um.
Uh, I got it, I got it.
Actually, the Budget Advisory Committee, um, is not ours to do.
Oh, that's the one that, that is.
We have to delegate them by the, uh, the municipal officials for the, the district.
Okay, so I'll ignore that one, but I do have the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission Select Board Representative, Jeff Tarbox, and the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission Select Board Alternative, Lisa Johnson. And the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission Public Representative is for one year Joanna Jacobs. Lincoln County Register of Deeds Town Administrator Donna Curry. Local Health Officer Kathy Henderson, um, our previous Health Officer, um, Tamara Tyler. Um, resigned as of June 30th. So Kathy, who has a background in nursing, uh, was willing to take on the role. Midcoast Municipal, hang on, half of it's gone here. Midcoast Municipal Association Select Board Representative, Jeff Tarbox. Municipal Agent for one year DeeDee Greenleaf. Planning Board Member for three years John Henderson. Funding Inspector for one year Gary Richardson. Uh, it's actually a three-year term, but Jerry left at the end of two years, two out of his three-year term. So we've already talked to Gary about that. Public Excess Officer for one year April Thibodeau. Road Committee Member for one year Andrew Bradford, one year for Road Committee Member Brett Rainey. Road Committee Member, there are several of these, I'll tell you when I'm done, for one, all for one year. E Davies Allen, Jim Cromwell, Annie Steiers, Mike Hughes, and Ross Norton. And now we have the Select Board Chair, which is now Donna Curry. Shelffish Committee Member Neil Stanton. Shelffish Committee Alternate Number One Julie Casson. All for one year. Shelffish Committee Alternate Number Two is George Richardson III. Tax Collector and Treasurer for one year Ashley Wright. Technology Committee Member Alan Doman, is that, did I pronounce that right?
That is right.
Technology Committee Member, here's some more Technology Committee Members, all for one year. Um, Gay Wagner, Jack Swanton, Jason Cates, Jeff Tarbox, Kate Studly Titten, and Ralph Jacobs. Town Clerk for one year April Thibodeau and Tree Warden Kyle DePietre.
Julie, question?
I didn't think Al Doman was still on it.
Well, he hasn't been, I don't know if Jason, uh, asked him.
He didn't.
Didn't ask him.
I think these were just old names.
Cause he hasn't been on for over a year.
Yeah, okay, scratch that one. Uh, that's not part of my.
Yeah, I don't think Kate Studly, no. If, if Jason hasn't asked him, but you and I didn't know if he had.
I don't think he had.
The only, the only, uh, so it would be, um, Jason, uh, Gay.
Jack Swanton?
Actually, Jack's been pretty much dropped off as well, Ralph and myself. So Ralph, myself, Jason, Gay.
Alright, I'm gonna read those again, just for clarity. So the Technology Committee Members, each for one year. There's Gay Wagner, not, no to Jack Swanton. Jason Cates, Jeff Tarbox, and Ralph Jacobs.
Yeah, and just to say, it's, if, if others want to join, that's fine, but, but, uh, the ones we've moved, had indicated previously, we, um, they're so interested in continuing.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, the list of appointments. Do I have a second?
What's something?
And all in favor?
Aye.
We have all the paperwork to sign, but we'll do you a favor and not sign it till at the end of the, still during the meeting, but at the end, so if anybody wants to leave, yeah, Julie.
I think you'll just have to retype the ones for the technology ones before they're sworn in.
Yeah, it may, needs to be, right.
Yeah, we just not sign them?
I just wouldn't sign the technology.
Right, 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 agreed, agreed, yeah, I marked them off on my list, so, um. And there was also the one about the, the Budget Advisory Committee has to be, so I deleted.
Yes.
I'm saving your handwriting.
Thank you. There, that's why we're doing it at the end of, of the evening too. Alright, um, I'd like to, we, we have the, the warrant record, which, um, will go up on our website. Um, we have reviewed that and.
Well, actually, I'd like to hold off on that, cause I didn't have a chance to review your revised version.
Okay.
So I looked at the first version this morning, but I'd like to, uh, look at it, uh.
Okay.
Before.
So we will say that for next week. Okay. Uh, I suspect we have a citizens issue.
Yes.
Okay. And you are?
I'm a Stunbar from Oak Run Road.
Alright.
And it's really that Conservation Commission issue or question. As you know, we're turning in our grant application on Friday. And I wanted to be sure that the board was in agreement that we should proceed with the turning in of that grant application, just for the record. Uh, we have everything we need at this point. If there's any more comments from the board members, I welcome them. Uh, but we've gotten good comments and, uh, the only thing with it missing so far is the certificate of insurance, which will be, uh, available this week. I'm told April received a notice that it's nailed last week. So she should be able to get her hands on it.
Which, is that the town's insurance or?
Yes, MMA insurance for the town. It's a requirement that it be submitted with the application.
And it ran out, you said July, first of July.
July 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
The application, it was on the seventh, so we're looking outside the window.
Yeah.
And then finally, there are two letters of, uh, support that we hope to get from our state senator and our state representative, Jeff is working on that, I trust, and we'll see what we get. We don't get it, we won't submit.
We'll, we'll get somehow. If I have to drive, you'll guess.
Is that from Cameron and, uh, home?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I saw your note that you were still waiting for those two, so, um. From my perspective, of course, I'm on the, the committee anyway, um, I say go for it. And I don't know what you two think.
There's no reason not to, yes, that's changed.
No, I, I sent you, I sent two of you, I didn't send one to you. You haven't been in on the discussions, uh, so far, but I'm happy to send you one. And, uh, take a look at it, if you have any comments, we've got a couple more days.
Yeah, you've done a great job. And I, I know you said that there's not a great chance that we'll get it, but the, the fact that you've done all this work will help for the next one you're gonna write. Which probably makes one.
Well, the, the next round, third round, uh, is in the late fall or winter. And if we don't hear in September that we've been awarded this one, then we'll go ahead and resubmit it.
Mm-hmm, that's time.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, great. By the way, I.
Oh, and I, I should say, the third grant application came from our workshop last August, the community workshop, uh, where people got to vote on what they thought was the highest priorities. The third priority is energy efficiency for town buildings. Uh, the consideration of solar, uh, the consideration of heat pumps, insulation, uh, all of that stuff is the third priority. And we would hope to be able to pursue it along those lines as our, our third opportunity.
Okay, but Dennis, this would have been under correspondence, but I just got in the mail, um, this evening, something from Efficiency Maine. And, and it says that Efficiency Maine is currently offering a special funding opportunity for Main Towns upgrading their heating, cooling, ventilation, lighting, and refrigeration systems. Um, and it says Main Towns with fewer than 5,000 residents, that sounds like us, are eligible for enhanced incentives on heat pump systems, including variant refrigerant flow, interior and exterior lighting, ventilation, equipment. So is this something that you wanna take and for our committee to look at? And maybe a possibility for, um.
Sure, I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe we'll have a copy of that before I send it, give it to you.
There's actually a whole, uh, package that they put out last year, um, full towns discussing the options and, and the approach for, for planning. So we can, we can take that up, uh.
Yeah, so I'll make a copy and give that to you. Um, Susan, I see you have your hand up, I apologize.
Oh, no, that's fine, thank you. Um, so, yeah, Susan Johnson, the Wiscasset Newspaper. And, uh, just a question on the, uh, grant that the Conservation Commission is gonna be applying for. Uh, what are they seeking and how much are they seeking and, and who are they applying to?
Dennis, it sounds like you.
The grant is to the community, it is, it is part of the Community Resilience Partnership, which is a component of, uh, the Governor's Main Won't Wait Initiative. And it's a $50,000 grant. And the, uh, grant will be to review, uh, critical town infrastructure in light of sea level rise and storm surge, uh, expected, uh, due to climate change in the coming decades. So we have some funds to do some redesign work on some of our most vulnerable tidal limit crossings. As well as look at our whole 36-mile coastline to see what properties, what parcels, what roads, private or public, might be subject to inundation, uh, by 20 years.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we have the expert right here who actually is a grant writer as well. Alright, um, okay, um, any other citizens issues?
I got companies.
Yeah, um, thank you, Dennis. I'm not sure if, um, Jim knows how to use a, I'll finish the copy machine, the two of them have figured it out. Uh, next on the item was roads, so we'll have to wait just a minute.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a pretty, uh, I mean, the letters, just, you know, it's, they're keeping us accurate, it's a package. And so you, you weren't on the board then when, when we reviewed that last year?
Yeah, I, I was, but I don't remember going into deep detail on that.
Well, I don't, uh, certainly, but the, uh, couple of different opportunities, one of which again would be, we could do something on this one, uh, as a heat pump and that would address the, the point of having people to eating and pool in the center.
Mm-hmm.
And it's independent of the, of the, uh, the heating system, uh, here. Uh, the easiest first step we could take is to actually engage in that evaluator, you know, to look at our town buildings. Um, we already do use, uh, heat pumps for main part of the right landing house. Uh, but the, uh, uh, Town Hall has got an old, uh, oil heating system. And the Town Hall Committee here have talked about the possible development of energy improvements. But having done that key step of.
He's got one.
Uh, of, uh, getting an evaluator to look at. To test out the cost would be, um, in addition to that, there's funding then for lot of updates. And I believe we've done that already, they, they, the force, and so the tube line that we have in here is energy efficient. Uh, so there may be other things we might do, but this is pretty good. And what we have outside on the parking lot now is also an LED, uh, pole. Um, so we've taken some steps already to, uh, to improve the energy efficiency of town, town buildings.
Yeah, we had also talked at, at the Conservation, uh, Commission about doing a, a study to see what was needed and, um, and that's when we wound up asking the town, what are your priorities? And wound up that this is the third priority, so, uh, we didn't do anything about it, but we, we've had conversations there too. So I think between our work and their work, we should be able to figure out something. But putting it on, um, on Dennis, like he's so, he's so done, though, he does a great job.
I think it's first, personally, I think it's really important to make Town Hall energy efficient. But I'd be curious to know what can and can be done with it being on the start register.
I, I don't know that the, uh, I, I'm not sure as much as what, I'm not sure that there's a significant issue on that. I think the biggest issue with the Town Hall is, is the dimensions and, and the absence of insulation. So we don't want to do anything that would damage the historic value.
Right.
Uh, but heat pumps don't necessarily have to.
They don't have to, but just where you maybe put things because of, um, you don't want them to be seen, you know, where it would be, you don't want something just in the walls or right where it would be seen because that would be affecting the look of the building. Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, there's a real issue there with, um, the acoustics of that building. It is so worse than the world, but, you know, you can't, you can't do anything that's gonna impact the, 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 the whole structure and whatnot. But I keep thinking, we need to put blankets over, on the roof, uh, when, when we have a meeting or something, cause it is just, um, it's awful, but, um, but yeah. Alright, so carrying on, our next topic was roads.
Uh, April has my, uh, in specifications for round one. She's typing them up, uh. Then we can just plug in the, the dates. And I'm waiting for that model so we can just change the scope of work. Uh, I talked to Jack Shaw about adding 500 yards of gravel. He quoted me 2420 a yard delivered up here. Stock piled up here in, in the, uh, by the sand shed. And to grade the sections of road, all the gravel from here and spread it and regrade it, $20,000 plus the cost of gravel.
Does that seem reasonable to you?
It does to me, uh, put it up the bid, I don't believe the scope of that work, will, you'll find it any cheaper because it's the greater, not everybody's doing greater. We do, I can't touch it. I can't touch the price of the gravel, not even close, um. So I have to leave that call on, on, on you guys, whether we award this worth to Jack Shaw or whether we put it up the bid. Jack grades the roads, he knows where they're most efficient, uh, we've been happy with this grading. The areas and the grading that was in question, where we need the gravel.
Yeah, we talked about this before, it's like, at what point, at what amount do you decide that you have to put it up the bid? And, and I know where I worked before, there, there were, it was like, if it was over $3,000, you have to put it up the bid. So I don't know if there is a limit, if there's an MMA requirement or.
We actually have a policy.
You do have.
The, the town set a policy, um, some, sometime there, and they'll just turn it down. Uh, that's what the, what the council said.
So maybe if it's 1999, you're okay?
Yeah, uh. So I don't, give them that, that policy and then give them 20,000, it's, it's actually, so, I think, uh, cause we've been fuzzy, I found the, I went through the policy books to, to see what you had on it. Because at any point, think of town, we said inside of 25,000, uh, is a, is a cutoff, but, uh, knowing and, and respecting, uh, Jack, but, um, we, we could go out to bid and, 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 uh, set up and, and, and see if there is some, some competition, but Jack can still do his, his supposed pricing. Where, whatever, but it might be the, to be, it would be compliant, I think, with our policies to do that.
To see prices.
To, to, to put it out, to put this, uh, the work, uh, and the specification that will be in the gravel and, and the grading will to be done, uh, in such a way that, uh, it would be fair, uh, to bidders.
Yeah.
And, and give, uh, it for Jack too.
Yeah. Yeah, alright.
Or town to offer a little bit less, under 20,000.
Yeah, I mean, I, we could break it up and the town can pay for the material, he can do the work. Cause he, even he can't truck gravel with him for that price. This is from another source.
Wow.
There's no money in, usually the guy, it's getting to the point where. Usually the guy, it's getting to the point, the way it was when I was on the West Coast. Years ago, the people in the pits were hauling the material, because anyone wants to come make any money on.
So this, the gravel, uh, Jack, now it's just coming from a, a, a third party.
Yes.
Okay, but, but is it coming through Jack's book since the?
Either way, either way, I don't think it really. It really, uh, I think the town would pay for it. Direct material. Uh, but we can put it up there either way.
So he would charge twenty thousand, including the gravel, that? Without the gravel?
That's the grading work and the spreading from here. And spreading it and grading it. The problem with a truck to make it efficient, bring it down here, have to be at least triaxial. And you're not going to spread gravel because places on the road that are most gravel deficient run the pile lines. And you can't try gravel with a triaxial on the pile lines. So that. Means you have to stop out, which really increases the cost, now you're going to reload it on. And truck it around. We would, all the places where there's the pile lines on one side of the stuff, they're in pretty good shape.
Of course.
Maybe this has been a factor in years past, why. It's all the way there.
Uh, it's a factor, you know, and believe me, I.
Well, Jim, the negative in specifics, um. So we have the, the five hundred yards of gravel is one thing.
Yeah.
The grading is the second thing, and we treat it as, as two separate things.
We get the, the co, I know the contractor that he had his price of gravel from.
Yeah.
And we can pay them direct and then pay Jack to do his stuff.
Okay.
Which would be trucking it from here, loading it on his truck, touching it from here, spreading it, doing pre-grading. Spread the gravel and grading again.
Okay, and that's what he was talking about, twenty thousand.
So, and I could probably convince him to do it to nineteen nine nine thousand.
Well, that might solve a bigger problem, but uh, but I.
They would expedite the process and get it sooner than later.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, is that once you put things out for bid and you've got a, you extend your.
And you got the schedules, which. I don't know if Ed told you about that price at all, no, but that price reflects being busy. People are busy, the prices are.
Yeah, yeah.
And right now, everybody, if you ain't busy right now. That's serious.
So you already feel that if we, if you did put it up for bid, that you wind up getting a lot higher prices, yet you feel like Jack's already giving you pretty.
Talking about what he's done, cause his boys are uh doing stuff. This is something that Jack himself can come down and do. So that helps keep the price down a little bit.
If he can bring, the, if we have a policy that says twenty thousand, then if he's going to charge twenty thousand, we have to put it up for bid. If he can offer you a deal, and it's under twenty thousand, then um.
Which you might do, uh, I think um, getting too, was it devious, but um. We, if we're going to buy the, the gravel, the, the gravel, and then it is, you could uh let out the work to be done. And a set of roads with the grading and the gravel, and, and break this down into some pieces. And, and, and approach it that way.
Yeah.
Uh, because you're, you're confident that it's a, a good, a good price, and, and we know we get good service. Uh, then uh, that's one way to approach it and, and avoid it. And if we're all comfortable in, 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 in doing it that, breaking it down into pieces, so there's smaller chunks.
I would rather actually do that because. I want to start keeping more attention to, I would grab what we put on this road. How much on this road, how much on this road? I take this wise, and it will be handy in the future. Or should something arrive and say, look, you know, this is what we, this is what we've actually spent on this road in the last ten years.
And, and again, it's good for us to be able to track of this route, by road, how much we've been investing in this route. Do we have that for history?
But I think it's important.
I'm just gonna point, put something out there as you just mentioned, hit, sorry. Can we take before and after photos of all roadwork that we do? Not only will it help us for historical reference, but when we come to storms and for. Um, emergency management, we do need pictures because we need pictures. I know you want to go out and you want to fix it, you want to plant that tree. But having pictures before and after. Helps us because if we do not have pictures, we do not get included in get, in the. Putting all the money together for the, for the county in getting reimbursement. The other thing is. If we do not have pictures, even if of good roads, if there's a washout later on. If, let's say you're fixing and grading a road. And we have a good picture before and after you've done it, and what the road looks like, and maybe. A year down the road, we have another storm and there's a washout. We have a nice picture of what the road looked like after it was fixed. And we have to do remediation later. We, we then have proof that Jimmy worked on it, it's been fixed. Now we have a picture of what happened during the storm, then we have a picture of what we've done during the storm. We have historical references and that helps us build our package for FEMA. So if we can.
And, and aside from that, I always like before and after pictures, because especially when somebody says, but have you done anything on this road? It's like, well, let me show you what it looked like.
I really like the idea of it, because I'm spending thirty thousand dollars, about a people's money. I like the camera too. This is where your money was.
Uh, we talked about this before, and did we ever get you a camera?
It was talk of that digital camera, and I'm still game.
Okay.
I know, you know.
You don't, if for most of them, you just aim and shoot, so we'll work on that. Um, there is a digital camera. Back there, I don't know if it works, and yeah, so let's put on.
But it would be great to have even just the historical reference.
Yeah, I, I have to do that at home because like it takes them forever to finish a project, but it. Work in progress. I'm just thinking some of the roads that I, I've been on, it's like, oh my god. Um, but uh to be able to see the before and after.
It's tax paid with money and, and visit requests, you know, want to be able to say, well, you know.
So multiple purposes.
I think I have my emergency management hat on.
Yep, yep, I could tell, I recognize that hat. Yep.
Because just for the rain, they opened up the system last night.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, it wound up not being as bad as, yeah, I know, I've been lucky.
Was, was also, I think there was pictures, there was a lot of good kind of roads that washed out, there's no less.
Yeah, they were talking in Jay, that they were um quite a few accidents because of the roads and.
They were concerned about flooding, so we want to make sure that if they ever have to, we would like to be included. In the county's um cap toward any dog, because we, the county has to reach a certain threshold. Before it's even considered.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, um, what is it, we have this minimal damage when you have an accident or something, it's like you got to upfront the first five thousand or something. Yep. All right, uh, for correspondence.
Let's, let's uh actually make a, a decision that uh empowers Jim to go forward. Um, so I'd like to make a motion uh that we approve uh Jim from buying five hundred yards. Of gravel through either directly or indirectly through uh either through Jack Shaw or directly to the, to the, the uh. Uh pit owner, uh so if we have the gravel. Uh, so we make that a motion, I can, I'll have some others.
All right, I'll second it. Would you write down what your motion was, because I don't remember.
More or less.
Okay.
I'll, I'll repeat that Jim be authorized to go forward and buy, procure five hundred uh yards of, of gravel.
One way or the other, right. All right, so we said, had a second, all in favor? Right, right, okay.
At the price you were quoting, that's less than twenty thousand, so we're good.
Yeah, the, the ground torn up, twenty-four twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're good there.
But then Jack's portion was going to be twenty.
But you said you're going to put it into pieces, so it could be a five thousand, a six thousand, or.
So I just wanted to then make a second motion that we can authorize our road commissioner to receive contracting with uh Jack Shaw. Or portions of, of her roads um and uh with the understanding that the total would be uh twenty thousand of us.
Nineteen nine ninety-nine or less.
But by doing anything by pieces, I think we're, we're.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, and, and this is, yeah, well, I think partially, this isn't part of the motion. Uh, but yeah, keeping track of the pictures before and after will be great, and also it's a good way to, to track on, on what gets done. You have an opportunity to, to step in if you have any, any concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'll second it. All in favor?
On the, as you see, I met with Amy the other night, they will be here the week of the tenth is planned uh.
That's Crooker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Weather pending, of course, their goal is to, the week of the tenth, grind. East Shore Road and Greenleaf Road and grade it and compact it. And haul the six hundred yards of inch and a half down to East Shore Road. And I showed him the area that I wanted it, but then. While they're doing that, they got to pay the job and the roster, they're paving there, so once they get this stuff done, they can rush it down, the paving crew will come down. Immediately. Uh, start on something, of course, there's the two extra pieces that are coming out of the payment account on. Post Office Road and the other piece down to Williams Beach on East Shore, that hill. So they'll, you know, how, they got contracts, what order they do them in the night of the storm, that'll be up to them. Those two sections on the, the Post Office Road and the other piece on East Shore won't be graded, they're just paving all once there. But they will be here the tenth, I'm going to talk to April about getting.
Get it posted.
Getting it out on the worldwide web so everybody knows it.
Yeah.
It's going to be painful for two days to people, but in the end it'll be worth it. And you won't see us again, hopefully, on your road for a while after this.
He sure has been asking for a long time, so hopefully they won't complain too much.
Well, that's the worst part there, I mean, you know, the part, there's still work to do, there's always work to do, but.
Yeah.
It gets us that much closer, you know.
So Jim, I apologize, but I wasn't taking good enough notes when you started talking about Crooker, so I get a week of the tenth, they're, they're going to be grinding.
Yeah, grinding up top and they'll grade it. And compact it.
You said weather permitting, right?
Yeah.
That means.
They can do well, as long as they don't get delayed. You know, this week or.
Exactly.
The grinder should be there Monday, that part should be almost indefinite.
Can they do that when it's wet?
They can do the grinding and stuff, as long as it's not.
Or, or, yeah, right.
Uh, they can pave over gravel. When it's a light rain, they just can't pave over pavement.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to be sure we have that.
Yeah. All right, for correspondence, I just have the one, um, Jeff, if you want to talk about this. Has you actually filled it out for us, uh Land for Maine Future, just something that we do yearly?
Well, yeah, I took you under, under other legal positions, but doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Uh, it, again, this is just the a- annual report for the ferry landing uh to the state um. It's the Land for Maine's Future Fund. Uh, and uh, so it's very simple, just, just because the, what we're doing, they were continuing to maintain the property. And we sent a nice picture of the gardens uh showing the uh.
I have lots of pictures.
Okay. Well, I included one when I sent you guys.
Yeah, I saw that, I think, so it was good as.
Well, have you got something else?
I will send them to you.
What, what part to execute is that we do uh need to then send this in to the state person.
Interest for.
But I, if you're okay, I guess that move we were with this.
All right, second, all in favor? And we'll put it on our calendars to start remembering to do that. All right, um. Anything else under correspondence? No, okay, under admin items, we need to sign a. A Midcoast to Maine and Towne Westport Island Agreement for Services. Um, we approve this. Um, at the town meeting, um, but there's a um, an agreement. That in every town has to have uh some kind of services for uh Maine society. So I make a motion that we um approve this. Do I have a second, second? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, it looks like it just needs one signature, but I can do that, right?
Somebody can witness your signature.
The date is through July.
Very good.
I didn't have a date twice, I mean, you want to witness it. Okay. And you had mentioned at the town meeting about that we were required to do the um, something with the shelters. And I had called um about an issue where we need to have somebody. Deal with an animal that she had, and when I called, it was interesting because I'd never called for the town. And um, and they did say that um. That they, they have to keep some spots open for um, for towns, because I said, the individual is going to bring the animal. And she said, well, we don't have room, and I said, okay, but if I say the town is bringing it. If I take the, the animal and I'm going to bring it, that's okay. So it wound up, we, we worked it out. Um, but um, yeah, the, the, when individual wanted to do it, they said they were very full. Um, at both locations, both the um, one in Brunswick and the one in Edgecombe. So I talked to the woman, told her who I was and what the issue was, and um, and that's when she told me that they. They have to hold spots, so I said, okay, so if you don't let this woman bring her animal in here. I'm going to call the animal control officer, have him pick up the dog, and then you can bring, then you have to accept it. She said, yeah. It's like, there's no difference, the same dog, well, so I, I, I understood, so she, she did. Even, and um, the dog is there now, hopefully has a home, but.
We don't want to pay for the animal control officer to have to do that.
No, no, but.
Pay for the animal control officer, have to do that, but we also don't want. As the town be paying just for anybody, just to say, I don't want my dog anymore, and I'm going to give it up, and it's really if. We have to pay because if there's a situation that requires a. Bite or something that we have to pay to have, like, when we had the bite situation on my road, where the dog actually has to be um.
Euthanized.
Or take, not necessarily, not euthanized, but taken away because of a legal situation, they have to take in. And we need a place that we pay for by law, that they, we by law, they by law, every town has to pay for a shelter.
Yeah.
We don't want to let people know because what will happen is anybody who gets a puppy for Christmas and then.
He doesn't want it too much later.
Who realizes it.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was um, it was me who wanted to send the dog there. And um, and, and they were very nice, but it was interesting that um, that she wouldn't take it from the individual. At first, and that, when I said, okay, I'll get. I'll bring it over as a town up or something, it was like, there is a spot for that, so it was. Seeing in action was, was kind of interesting. All right, last thing that I have on admin items is the um. Yeah, that's right here. Yeah, there's a form that we need to sign, uh Rob Whitney Shore Run Town Hall Rental Form. Yeah, this right here, yeah, there's a form that we need to sign, uh, Rob Whitney Shore Run Town Hall Rental Form, um, that, um, that we're gonna sign, uh, it was recommended that we sign it and then waive the fee, because it's a, um, a fire department fundraiser. And so, um, but we do have to, oh, this is the chair, this is rug raised, got it, okay. Um, so we need to sign this and, um.
He's very good about providing his insurance certificate and insurance.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we accept, um, and, and sign this and that we waive the fee for, uh, Rob Whitney in this, uh, Shore Run Situation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, and then I have to I've been given, you don't have to draw that, right? Now to Westport Island, select board member, all right, here we have all three. Print, signature print. Okay. Yeah. We'll do correct. Sorry. And any other admin items that either of you have? If not, then we'll go to other legal business. Any other legal business?
Let's, we talked about the status of the, the healthcare research. I had gotten response back from Towne Porter on what some of it could be, with, uh, his insurance contest, so just, so we have that per comparison, and I forwarded that on to you two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so just to note that as far as I don't know if there's any other progress in terms of rates or.
I contacted, um, Richard DeFries, haven't heard back from him yet, I also contacted Carol, um, Norris, and she didn't have any specific, um, insurance policies or companies, but she mentioned something about, um, like creating a fund where you could actually put in, so that if you had a high deductible, like if you chose high deductible, that there could possibly be a fund that, um, that the staff pays into and what the town pays into or whatever. And that if nobody winds up needing that deductible, then it just sits there and you know, use it next year, sort of like a, a health saving, what do they call it, health saving?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, yeah.
Um, so, um, and she has done that in the past and suggested if we wanted to the guys on that or whatever, um. So that, um, I just got late this afternoon, so I haven't forwarded that on to everybody yet, um, but, um, and I'm trying to think anybody else that I contacted. And I know the, the staff has been doing some research on their own. Um, and during our Wednesday, um, workshop, we talked a little bit about it last Wednesday, and, um, we'll continue when we get some more information. So. Uh, do you want to give a very brief update on the lack of, um, response from, um, the Baker Road?
Well, that's true, we've not yet, uh.
And I know you.
We hadn't heard from our attorneys, but as of uh, in the last week, there still hasn't been anything from the other parties attorney, it came in signing the agreement.
And I went by there the other day, and I was wondering at what point in time can we move that sign off some, out of the middle of the road, and can we put it where it should be, and sort of level that, is that's are, are we, do we still need to wait until?
Hey, Jeff, we discussed this tonight, thinking why is to wait till you get a signed agreement? Uh, because if it never gets signed, we don't want the backlash, we leave that.
Yeah, you could take the sign down again. And, and.
Sign there, and he's really by rights moving bad. But get the agreement signed, and we'll take it from there, and we'll be able to sign one way or the other. So. Cause obviously the dirt pile around it will have to be moved and whatnot.
Yeah, the funny thing is, it, I mean, it, anybody who doesn't know the situation, it looks ridiculous. Um, but it also really clearly shows just how much property he takes, you're like.
Yeah, it does, yeah, actually, we moved this stuff back, cause it is a fractionally the property now. I'm gonna step out for a second, because I didn't bring my, my laptop in, I'm about to run out.
Yeah.
One of the backup on the road too. I don't know if I can wait, Jeff.
Yeah, you should wait until Jeff brings back. We have to pause. Plugged into here, but not, his computer's not plugged in.
Yeah, oh, I lost this one, and I just, this is so long.
Oh, mine's running down too.
That's why I'm sitting on the side. Access to the.
I thought it was for a quick escape.
Yeah.
All right.
If we want to get back up the road again, uh, there's a couple of small things I want Randy Russell to, uh, various locations around town, and I also wanna give him the green light to start roadside mowing. Uh, and I didn't know if he was camping this weekend, and one of the other local weekends, I'm gonna wait for Wednesday night to come back in. Uh, you know, I got the labor, the work, busting going, so, but things that need to be staying on, George Richardson's been telling me every time it rains, it washes the sand up the road. Because the sand is much higher than the hotel. So I want him to gotta carve that off, maybe a week, he ate that problem. People complain, they ride bikes down to there, and when the sand gets out and they're coming down the hill and the cars coming the other way, they have it's a dangerous situation. And the water obviously cannot affect it, we bring off the road right there with that sand burning along here, that's just one example of kind of some small, oh, then you know already of, of deal with.
Good.
Last.
All right, um, if we have no other business, we are not going to adjourn.
Just, if I could.
Yep.
But going down the list of things, uh, we also, uh, have not heard anything from our attorney about the longer burden violation, so that's still another, uh, open item. We are in the process of doing a research, the premium information act request, uh, to provide information, uh, about previous, uh, land use violations, um, at the request of Longberry's attorney. Uh, and we also now met with our code enforcement officer, uh, to discuss, um, his records, um, and, uh, but we have not had further clarification from our attorney as to where our next step should be, as a select board for pursuing enforcement. And so hopefully we'll have that set, so we can be, uh, starting to set that, the process in place next week.
We haven't, you know, like, I think there are some things in boxes, like where if there are any, uh, Board of Appeals holders or minutes.
I never saw any Board of Appeals, those were all, but I'd have to go, I'd be happy to look, um, I never saw any of those in the past.
Neil didn't give you, uh, anything from the board?
Anything Neil gave me, he was on the back house. He just gave me one binder.
Okay, we at least know, um, Gary gave us some information today to, and he's gonna actually talk to his dad tomorrow, so, um, get some information on.
Is there anything in the closet? In the safe, there's old things up in the, in there.
Yeah, we just started looking.
Look in the safe, um, because there's old minutes way up in the top in the safe too. There may be something in there.
Okay.
Um, but no, um, there, the only thing he, when he handed back to me was his binders. It was the, I had left on the, on the, on the, on the desk. And then he didn't give me much.
Oh.
So the binders, that sounds like the, just the basic materials, did, did binders have minutes in them, or?
I never got around to looking at them, he, he gave them to me in, what was it, December, or?
Yeah.
So I never.
Yeah, yeah.
From the box, yeah. But he, he gave them, like, how old are they, when they moved, they were brought up.
All right, so we'll, we'll look at that, um, later this week and see.
There was a whole draw that said Board of Appeals, and I never left it that long.
Okay. Yeah, Gary, Gary has some insight, he'll give some looking at.
But there were some binders that were up above, and there were some binders that were in the closet. And, you know, I never, you know, my ears went back and read through the things that were old unless I had to.
Yeah.
Because it's just, there's never any on.
Okay, so, uh, we're not, the last thing on our, is there anything else?
I think that covers the.
Okay.
Outstanding.
Okay. Um, so what we're gonna do is before we close tonight, is we're just going to, um, sign everything and before we call it, uh, a night, so you're welcome to sit while we.
You can adjourn, yeah.
Well, that's okay, we're, I'm gonna make sure that we're official, so we're not gonna adjourn yet. But we're gonna start signing. Um, I need to pull out, um.
We must sign our own.
You can adjourn because you've already voted on them. So you can adjourn and call them.
So pay attention to the ones that we.
In that way, don't accept anything.
Yeah, then we will adjourn. Do I have, I, I'd like to make a motion for adjourn, do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Good night, Charlotte and Susan, good night, Julie, good night, Julie and Jim.
Good night, thank you.
I, I just, I take notes just in case, because if I have to read the minutes and do the math.
Well, some situations, we can take turns.
Yeah.
Yeah, because love is never gonna do.
Yeah.
So, so it's always the minute.
Okay, you have another problem?
Yeah, no, I, I, this is an afterthought. Yeah, no, I, I think this is enough of a problem.